Okay, good morning everyone. And welcome to this Lisbon Council virtual town hall meeting on citizen data in focus, machine learning and data analytics for citizen support and government savings. My name is Charlotte van Ooyen and I will be chairing today's discussion. This town hall meeting is a pre-event for the SEMIC 2020 conference, the European Commission's annual summit on interoperability. And we also celebrate one of the most impactful case studies we did for the European Commission study "Data Analytics for Member States and Citizens", that was launched last June and is available on Join Up. You have a link to this study in the invitation to this meeting. We expect to organise more meetings like this in the near future. Now, the current global health crisis has made it painfully clear how essential it is for both decision-makers and the public to have and share good data and apply sound analytics and modelling to make sense of these data. How can a responsible, effective and collaborative practice of public data management and analytics in Europe be realised? We have two speakers crunching this question. So first off, we will have Seth van Hoeland, Program Manager for Interoperability at the Directorate General for Informatics, who will give an overview of the European Commission's priorities in this area and the key actions ahead. And then for our keynote speaker, we have Annika Jakobsen, Head of the Data Mining Unit in Denmark's welfare benefits organisation Utbytaling Denmark, who will zoom in on the Danish practice of using machine learning and other analytical techniques to combat welfare fraud and error. And we hope that she will reveal the recipe for her unit's success. Now, for some practical things, today we have almost 60 data and policy experts from over 10 countries who registered for our meeting. And you join us from governments, international organisations, universities and consultancy firms. And we're looking forward to hearing all of these different perspectives. To facilitate the interaction, we invite all of you to use the chat function in WebEx to share questions and comments that may arise during the presentations. And I will open the question and answer session after Annika Jakobsen's presentation and then call on you to pose your question yourself. I'd also like to draw your attention to the fact that we're recording this session and will make it available on the Lisbon Council website. And also, Annika Jakobsen's presentation will be shared with all of you. Now, without further ado, I give the floor to Seth van Hoeland for his opening remarks.
Thank you a lot. Charlotte, do you hear me correctly? Perfect. So thanks a lot for this possibility to introduce the very interesting work by Annika Jakobsen. And as many of you know, with the interoperability unit at Digi, we're working a lot on methods and standards to facilitate the share and the reuse of data. And so in that way, we care a lot about semantics. However, I don't know if many of you remember the article from Chris Anderson in Wired. He wrote this opinion piece, I think, back in 2008, "The End of Theory". It was written in quite a polemic way, but the whole idea of Anderson was that at a point when we have enough data, there is no longer a need for complicated data modelling efforts. We just let the statistics run and then automatically we'll get interesting results. So in that sense, I was very excited to read the case study in the report provided by the Lisbon Council on the Denmark case study. In the sense that I found it very interesting, of course, from, I would say, the interoperability unit's perspective, the work and the role played by the basic data registries. So as perhaps if you already read the case study, you've noticed that these basic data registries, which monitor and which contain the reference data, allowing to see when someone's income changes or when someone moves address. Actually, these are the data which are leveraged within this whole methodology. And in a way, the data models and the semantics, which make it clear what is the actual role of all of those data, also allow in a way to connect the dots. And so in this way, I'm very happy with this presentation, which allows to bypass this rather polemic or binary view between semantics and between statistics. And it demonstrates that both actually collaborate and leverage one another very well. Also this morning, and as Charlotte mentioned, we are organising next week the very first virtual conference, so SEMIC 2020. You're all, of course, very happily invited. I think we already now have about 350 or 400 participants. And so within the context of the SEMIC conference, we will highlight all sorts of interesting case studies and pilots and very interesting work coming directly from different member states. I won't go through the whole programme. I think through the chat, you can see the URL of the conference and you can look at the programme. But towards the end of the day, I'm very excited to announce a, I would say, closing panel discussion, which will be moderated and led by David Ossimo from the Lisbon Council, where actually he will bring together three leading figures from, I'd say, the semantics and the data modelling world to discuss the role and the future of semantics in the context of the EU data policy. So thanks a lot, David, again, for facilitating that debate. And so that event will take place towards the end of the day, if I'm not mistaken, at 4:30. And then there will be a closing speech by our director. But so having said that, I'm very happy to hand over the floor to Annika. And I'm very excited to learn more about the case study and also interact during the discussion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Seth, for this great introduction and overview of developments at the European level. Well, a quick reminder to everyone, since we're in a virtual town hall, it would be nice if we could see who we have around the table. So if you feel up to it, if you want to, if you're not in your pyjamas or you feel like showing us your pyjamas, do put on your webcam and join all of us around the table. Now, we are ready to move from the European level to the country level with our keynote speaker. Before giving the floor to Annika, I'd like to share with you a couple of insights into the, well, context of the data mining unit in which it came into existence. And I draw these insights from the research we conducted in the aforementioned study on data analytics for member states and citizens. So I'm going to share my screen with you. So two developments were key to the data mining units coming into existence. On the one hand, this was the partial centralisation of the social welfare system. And on the other hand, this was the Basic Data Programme which came into existence, which Seth already mentioned as well. Denmark has an extensive welfare benefit system of over 30 different benefits, which include child benefits, students' grants, maternity leave, old age pensions, among other benefits. And it has one of the highest public social spending to GDP ratios in the world, amounting to 28% in 2018. Now, from 2007 on, the main responsibility for the administration of welfare benefits lay with the 98 municipalities. So it was highly decentralised, the welfare system in Denmark. And since 2010, this has gradually changed with the legal creation of the Utbytaling Denmark Organisation, a central welfare benefits administrator, which in fact took up its duties in 2012. And in the course of the years, Utbytaling Denmark has taken over several, but not all, welfare areas from the municipalities, thereby significantly alleviating the administrative burden for them. And around the same time of Utbytaling Denmark coming into action, the Basic Data Programme came into force in 2013. And this did not only have implications for the way in which public services are provided to citizens, such as them having to give their data only once to the government, but it also gave opportunities for the control function in the welfare system. And in 2014, the National Association of Municipalities, KL, and the national governments jointly decided to strengthen the control efforts in the municipalities and in Utbytaling Denmark. So putting a heavier emphasis on checking whether benefits were actually paid out correctly. Now, they concluded that a centralised approach to creating this control function would be the most effective and efficient way, also to seize the opportunities offered by the better access to citizen data created by the Basic Data Registries Programme and also taking into account the developments in machine learning and data mining in the fight against wrong benefits. Now, also considering that many municipalities wouldn't be able to invest in new IT systems and skilled personnel, it was decided to set up a central data analytics unit, the data mining unit, under the umbrella of Utbytaling Denmark. And now, if you're wondering what is ATP on this slide, this is a self-governing institution that is also pension provider and the factual administrator of Utbytaling Denmark. The data mining units would serve not only the benefit areas under the responsibility of Utbytaling Denmark itself, but also those left under the responsibility of the 98 municipalities. So that's why the data mining units created several cooperation agreements with the National Association of Municipalities, also a forum to advise on operational collaboration and a formal coordination group for more strategic cooperation. And at a later point, a cooperation was created with the Danish Agency for Institutions and Educational Grants, so that the data mining units could also perform this control function on the student grants that that institution was responsible for. Now, it was strategically and legally important to install the data mining units as a standalone unit in Utbytaling Denmark, as now amendments to the Act on Utbytaling could give the units the authority that it needed in terms of access to data and collaboration with all the organisations involved. And as was mentioned in the invitation to this meeting, in five years' time, impressive results have been realised. In the course of the years, the unit's revenue has steadily increased and its focus has shifted from retrieving incorrect payments after the fact to preventing fraud and error in the provision of welfare services. In 2019, a revenue of almost 62 million euros was realised, of which the majority through early intervention. Now, how have they managed to accomplish such impact with only an annual investment of 3.4 million euros? Annika, I now invite you to share your secrets with us.
Thank you very much, Charlotte. And thank you for giving a very good view of how it functions around us here in Denmark. And I will now also, my name is Annika Jakobsen, as Charlotte mentioned, and I will also share a presentation to you, so that we can go, so we can go a little bit through how we work here. Yes, I hope you can see my presentation now. I just shortly want to tell you that the data mining unit has four obligations. We acquire data from abroad, we also need to monitor the results, and then we need to make cooperations across authorities here in Denmark. But now I will focus on the data mining in this presentation. Just to give you an overview over how we work. So basically, as Charlotte mentioned, we get two kinds of data sources. So we get the data source of who is getting benefits from Utbytaling Denmark and from the municipalities and also the students, so that we get into our databases. And then we have the other part, which is the additional data, all the way from our CPR, where do you live, who are you married to, who did you used to live with, how many children do you have and so on, and who is in your family. And also BPR, the apartment size, how many rooms, and what does your apartment look like, company data we also get. We get taxing data, if you buy a car, if you, how many bank accounts do you have, and taxes in general. And then we have employment data, payments, how much employment or how much pay do you get, how many hours do you work and so on. And we also have other data, for instance, are you physically present when you get advice for how to get a new job and such things. And our crunch is done so that we have simple search, which where we can just see, do you get two benefits at the same time? And we make these social networks and company networks. And we also make this kind of case information so that you get the same data on your case when the caseworker gets data. And it's very important to notice that we look into data and when we point out a case, it gets sent to another authority with caseworkers that evaluate the case. So you are not guilty just because we point you out. There will always be a person that looks into your data and is obligated before 10 days to contact the citizen that receives the benefit. And together with the authority, the citizen helps the authority to get more information. And if the citizen is not happy, it is always possible to complain to a further institution. And then we send out the data to all the cases that should be looked at. They go out to the 98 municipalities and they have a website where they can go in and sign on with our digital sign-on and get the cases that way. And in here, Utbytaling Denmark, we use digital robots to create the cases. And of course, we monitor also. In order to build this kind of data unit, it's very important to have heaps of data. And it takes time to get data in and to get data right. And also, it's important to have the right competences. You need to employ data science, you need to employ software developers and business people. And your leadership has to be modern. You can't build modern technologies with old-fashioned leader style. So the staff has to have a freedom of work. And then, of course, you need the infrastructure, which is quite normal. You have a development area and you will have a testing area, pilot, and then you will finally put your machine learning models to production. Just to take a very quick overview over from 2015 to 19, we get more and more data sources in. We are going from simple criterias to a more complex, machine learning-based criterias. And as Charlotte mentioned, we started by looking at who is cheating to moving forward to preventing fraud, which we are very interested in already. When you apply for the benefit, we already there check you. And it's very necessary because the application is very digital. So it's necessary that the control is digital also. And as Charlotte mentioned, we have gone from, the revenue has gone, has increased a lot over the years. Just to tell you a simple criteria, here in Denmark, when you are a single mother, you can get a benefit. And it's very easy to cheat on that. You can just go into our electronic movement. And the father, often it's the mother and the father, the father can move his address to a friend. And we call it father hotels. And when you do that, then you get increased family benefit, you get increased housing benefit, and you can also get free childcare. So it is something that gets done and it's very easy to spot in data because we know if we can see in data that the two people have separated and the husband now lives in a very small flat together with seven other men. And those seven other men also have ex-wives receiving increased benefits. I would like to go through two examples of our machine learning models. But before I do that, I would like to talk a little bit about the early control. We have this for the 98 municipalities. There we have for the cash benefit, unemployment cash benefit, have to apply on the Borga DK, which is a public website. There you have to leave in your application. And that's what citizens they do when they apply for unemployment cash benefits. And every night, our system gets the data and crunches it at night. And when the communal case or the municipality caseworker wakes up in the morning, they go into our website and there they get a PDF with all the information needed that they can put on the case. And just to give an example how it was before we were introduced to this and how it is afterwards. So before, the caseworker in the municipalities, they had to log on to all kinds of web places and computer systems to collect all the data that are needed to handle the case. And you need to do this for every person living on the address of the application. And now, after, they just go into our webpage and they get a PDF that they can put on the case with all the information of the citizen and they are ready to make a decision on the case. I also want to tell also about this cash benefit for unemployment. Earlier, it was all that every, the law says that every three months, you have to go through all your cases in the municipalities to check if the citizen is still entitled to receive cash benefits. And there are many reasons why you are not entitled. It can be you get a new employer, it can be you should have a reduced cash benefit if you buy a car or if you get some money from somewhere or any of that kind of thing. So what we have implemented is that we have, with simple criterias, we have gotten, we have gotten our programmes to every night to look through all the cases and point out those cases which actually have some changes and which actually have changes that affects your social benefits. So now, 85% are approved automatically and 15% are looked through manually by the caseworker. And then I would like to go through our first machine learning model with fictive employment. And it is, it is, it works so that this is supervised learning. And it is, we get some data in and we have both experience-based and machine learning-based. And then we have a dataset from our taxing authorities with proven fictive hires, which the computer programme trains itself on. And just to go a bit, a little bit into it, why is it we do this? It is so, it is very easy to sit anywhere in Europe and establish a company in Denmark. You just go to a website and you make a couple of clicks and you have a company. And then you can start to hire people by using our e-income system. And after that, you can transfer seniority from EU so that you can get also our insurance for unemployment. After that, you can receive family benefits. It is so you only need to work 12 to 15 hours per week to get our child benefits. You can start to hire some pregnant woman and you will get the benefit there. And it is quite a lot of money, you get, it's 200,000 Danish kroner. And then, after that, you can report yourself sick and then you get money for that. Then you can let the company go belly up or bankruptcy and then you can again get money. After that, you can turn yourself unemployed and then you get your cash benefit unemployment. And so you can start again. And all the time while you do that, you earn permanent residency in Denmark and you earn for pension and you can use the educational system and also the hospitals and so on. So, no, now my PowerPoint didn't go anywhere. I can, oh, there it went. So when we look at these fictive employments, just to take some examples of the features that we have implemented. So we make this descriptive analysis first. So if you look at all the residencies of all companies in Denmark, only 1.5% live outside Denmark. But if you look at the residencies of these cheating companies that make fictive hirings, 20, more than 20% live outside Denmark. And if you look at the branch, real estate service and cleaning service is only 2% of the Danish companies, but of the cheating companies, it's 32%. And also the company type, this limited company is very common between the cheating companies. And if we look at the e-incomes, which is the taxing system I was referring to, where you need to put in how much do you earn and so on. With a normal company, it is very periodical. It comes in once a week or once a month, they put in the salaries earned. But in these companies that have fictive hires, it could be four months, three years back in time. The postal code has an effect, we have seen. And also, we have seen that there are more pregnant than in normal companies. And what we basically do is we take the known companies and put them into two piles and the algorithm trains itself on one pile, tries to identify fictive hirings on the other pile. That's basically how it works. And I have a concrete example here. There was a guy establishing a company, January 14, the month after he hires his pregnant wife and she is there just for four months so that she can get the maternity benefit, which is 26,000 euros. And the normal is when you are finished with your maternity, then you come back to work. She didn't do that, she was home for about a year. And then when she gets pregnant again, she comes back to work. She gets hired again and she gets again 26,000 euros. At that point, our version, first version was ready and she was pointed out by our machine learning models and our control department in Utbytaling Denmark got the case. And the caseworker writes to them and asks for the employment contract, the paychecks and one year of payment salary accounts from the bank. But they did not get very much answer back. So they sent it to the tax authority that looks into the company and finds out that the company has fictive hirings. And that's why we want them to pay the money back. But that is of course difficult. I go quickly on to our fictive sickness. And I want to just say quickly that when we introduced this, 98 municipalities, because they are the ones paying out money if you are sick. Then they said, we don't know when people are sick, there needs a doctor to tell when people are sick. So, but we went in there to make a machine learning model. So, but we went in there to make a machine learning model. And what we basically did is we looked three years back in time of all the sick periods and then we sought out many things that are not relevant. It can be you, you are not very much sick or you are only part time sick and so on. And then we end up with hundred and eighteen thousand people, a very little amount that we go, that we take to our machine learning model. And here we use outlier detection and most people they land in this black area and a few ones are in the outlier detection. Sorry. And those features that we look at, it can be all the way from if you are sick, live close to holidays. Do you have a relation to the owner of the company? Number of sick days, are there more cars in the company than there are employees and so on? And just to take two short examples, there was a hairdresser and that called herself sick. And just to look at the, we make this kind of graphical mapping for the caseworker and you can see that every year she is sick in week seven, that's a public holiday in Denmark. Every year she's sick in week four two, that's also a public holiday. And she's sick in the summer holidays also. And the caseworker at the municipality called her and talked about this and she said, I might have misunderstood the rules. I have another last example of some chef advices. And here you say, see the same pattern, the mother, the mother was the owner of the company and has quite many sick leaves. And then she hires her daughter and she has also similar kind of pattern. Then she hires the son, also similar kind of patterns. And if you go into the accountings of these companies, all in all, they have gotten paid out two hundred thousand euros in sick leave and this company would go belly up if it didn't get money from state. Yes, that was my presentation. Thank you for listening. I'm ready for questions.
Okay, thank you very much, Annika. This was absolutely wonderful and quite a lot to take in for our audience and at least it triggered quite some, some questions here. So I'd like to, to give the floor now to a couple of the people around our virtual town hall table. And first of all, I would like to give the floor to Sergio Consoli. So could you please briefly introduce yourself and well, the organization you work for and then pose your question?
Sure. Hi, hello everybody. It's really nice to be here. My name is Sergio Consoli and I work at the European Commission Joint Research Centre located in Italy. So I'm a data scientist and I work in a project related on big data for economic forecasting. So my question to Annika was related to interoperability. And this link also to the introduction by SET. So basically, Annika, I'm seeing you manage a lot of different heterogeneous data sources. So how do you handle interoperability there?
Can you be more specific? You mean how, how do I get different sources in?
Ah, yes, exactly. So you have different sources, you have a citizen which can be mentioned at differently in different fields. So how do you link together in order to have a unique model?
Yeah, exactly. What we do is that we have a, here in Utterling, Denmark, we have a data warehouse. So whenever you need, we need to get a new data source in, then we do it together with them. But it is very complicated because whenever you need a new data source, you need to contact the authority that has that data source. Because it's like split into many different authorities. And there is very much this kind of law work to do to, because that authority will, will say, okay, what do you need it for? And usually that can take a year or a year and a half to get that kind of source in. Did that answer your question?
Knowledge, any semantic models, ontologies are in place?
It comes in automatically. We use it, we use it, it comes in, it can come in as a batch that it runs every night or once a week. But we also use web services. There are authorities in Denmark that can give data with a web service.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Annika. Thanks.
Okay, thanks a lot. Next I would like to ask Mia Dzienko. I hope I pronounced it right to introduce yourself and ask your question.
Yes, hello. But I come from Slovenia, Ministry of Public Administration, Informatics Unit. Also specifically I work with semantics. Annika, about the basis for all this stuff that you do, it's, it's a great work. It looks very useful and efficient for public administrations or for local municipalities. So what are the legal bases for connecting different databases with personal information? And what are the legal bases for using machine learning models in, for public decisions actually? Because we have problems with this and we have to establish all this. We can't just further with innovations like that.
Yes. Yes, it is so that the legal basis for, for doing this is we have a very specific law that allows us to do this. And that law also says that we are not allowed, allowed to use sensitive data. So we are only allowed to use non-sensitive data, which means what's your name? Where do you live? How does your house look like? What do you pay in taxes? What do you earn? Things like that. We are not allowed to know if you are sick, what's wrong with you, if, have you been to prison? Things like that. We are not all, what is your political view or, or even what union are you member in? We are not allowed to know any such things. It is only non-sensitive data. But we have a specific law that allows us to have that data.
Do they then filter this, do they have this this from non-sensitive data or, because probably this database also sends data?
Yes, true. It is so that when we acquire data from another authority, then we always aim at only getting non-sensitive data. Sometimes it's not possible for the giving authority to filter it away. But then we have programs in, in like in the very first staging area before it comes into us that deletes it. So that our data scientists never have access to it. That's how we work. Is it your question?
Is the environment, is this kind of processing, like secure environments, data rooms or something like that?
Yeah, it is, it is not handled by our units. We, we have an, it is handled by our IT department that makes sure that this data never reaches us. But in most cases, we do it already so that the authority that gives us data is not giving us sensitive data.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I, I see that there are several questions, well, related to, to ethics. Well, well, legal has just came to the fore. So I'd like now to ask Jonathan Cave from the UK to introduce yourself and start with your question on ethical auditing, please.
Okay, I'm Jonathan Cave.
Sorry, I didn't hear your question.
Sorry, Jonathan, instead I will ask a question for you because we, we don't have a good sound quality coming from the UK. There must be some troubles in the sea going on. So I will ask the question for you. So you wanted to know what is the ethical auditing or standard arrangements in the data mining unit? So the machine learning, especially if it's deep machine learning, may not be explicable. And it effectively bases decisions about one case on the behavior of others. So used to train the model. So yeah, can you explain a bit this ethical?
Yes, I will explain that. It is so that first of all, we operate according to a law. So we have a very specific law, what we are allowed to do. Of course, we always have ethical, what could you say, thoughts about things. And they're in whole Utterling, Danmark and in ATP, we have an ethical standard. But it is, for us, usually it's so what is ethically wrong is also wrong according to the law. And so where we are now, it is so that the machine learning model never makes the decision, which is a burden to the citizen. So every time there is a case that is maybe will end up being so that some benefit is taken away from you, there will always be a caseworker taking that decision. So the machine learning models are pointing out saying, data shows that here is a high risk of fraud. But the machine learning model does not make the decision. Does that answer the question?
Sort of, except that it is a burden to have to defend yourself when the algorithm has flagged you up. And also because the law has to be written in a particular way. Universal, permanent, unambiguous and so on, whereas people's lives are anything but that. And I think when you start getting claims for long COVID cases, that the ability of the algorithms to pick those up and treat them properly may be difficult. So I'm just pointing out the law is not quite ethics in the timeframe in which it operates. I should say I'm at the Turing Institute on the data ethics group and this is something we're struggling with in trying to produce a framework.
I would say here in ATP and in Utterling, Danmark, we have a work that is ongoing around this ethics. And of course it is something to be a part of when your benefit might be taken away from you. But I know from caseworkers that it's not enough that the model points you out. There has to be also other things where the caseworker can see, okay, this might be something. So, so it's, it is not enough that, that model, the model points you out solely. It might just be the caseworker looks into your case. The model has maybe said, okay, this person might not be in Denmark. But if the caseworker can see in some papers that the person is physically very often attending meetings, then they will say, no, this is not a case. So, so the modeling, the models help the caseworker, but it's not taking over. Yes?
Was that answer to your satisfaction, Jonathan?
Yeah, for current purposes. I'm sure there are other things that we can discuss. It will be interesting to talk with you further about this.
Okay, thanks. Then I would like to ask Luca Remotti to quickly introduce himself and ask his question.
Hi, everybody.
Yes, sorry, Luca, you broke up at a couple of points, so I'll quickly rephrase your question. If I understood correctly, you asked about the assessment of potential data breaches threat. So mainly the information security and how do you assure that?
Yes, I think, as Charlotte said, it broke a few times. But I think what you wanted to know, how do we, how is our security? How we ensure that we don't get a data breach and so on? And of course, it is so that this ATP is a very big company where Utterling, Danmark also is. And about three thousand workers and we have a quite a large IT department that stands for all that. And we get reviewed once, once a year to make sure that this is all in order. And everything that gets done by our scientists and our software developers, it gets all locked. What data are you looking at and so on? Because you are not allowed to look at data that is not relevant to your work and so on. And, and of this, if there happens a breach, that's of course, hopefully that won't happen. And we have lots of systems in place that ensures that it's not possible. Also when we, when the commune or the municipality logs on to our website, they use this company, public login to get in there. Plus we use the IP address to make sure that they can't log on anywhere else from then, from the office. Or if they are at home, it has to be with a encrypted VPN connection. But there are many, it's not my area, how do you protect and how do you make sure that IT security is in order? But that is something that we have quite a lot of people employed by here at, at Utterling, Danmark. I hope it answered your question.
Yes, thanks.
Yes, thanks a lot. So next I would like to ask George Lobo to ask his question. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for giving me the floor. So I'm George Lobo. I'm a colleague of SET. I'm working in the Interoperability Unit. I was in charge, I was the nice report we just published with the JRC. We're collaborating on the innovative public services, the multi-dimensional framework. I have actually two questions because we, we discussed this as well in the scope of the study. I mean, the first question is that there were similar examples in Belgium with such tried fraud detection. And there were elderly criticism that the government was targeting the, the most vulnerable fraction of the population. So I was wondering if you have the same thing, that we use technology to target the poor part of the population instead of, I would say fraud, fraud evasion, et cetera, so that we don't use this technique. So that was the first point, if there was this sort of debate. And the other was as well, there is this movement, we know this in Finland and in other, sorry, to use a so-called proactive service. So instead of exposed control if people are cheating, that you use the data to see if people are entitled to the benefits. So they get the benefits without even applying. Do you consider as well to use that, to go to this direction?
I can, I think that if I take your second question first, there are certain benefits in Denmark you will get without applying. For instance, childcare benefits, the normal childcare benefit that everybody gets, that you get by just giving birth to a child. So you don't need to apply for that. But it's like a political decision, which benefits you need to apply for and which one come by itself. The, the other question is the, this thing that you go after weak citizens. That is something we consider a lot. And also, for instance, when we, this student allowance, there we have made a criteria where rich people, they swap children addresses. there we have made a criteria where rich people, they swap children addresses in order to get more benefit. Because in, in Denmark, so that when you are a student, if you live at home, you only get one thousand kroner per month. I don't know how much it is in Europe. But you get six times more if you don't live at home. So you can get caught by switching children. And these are actually rich parents that do that. So we try to, to, to not to go after the weak citizens only.
Thank you.
And about, nah, never mind. I'm ready for the next question.
Okay, the next, I would like to give the floor again to Seth, because I understood that he might not be able to stay until the end of today. And he also had an interesting question to ask to you, Annika.
Okay. Now, it's just very often when you use these types of techniques, they're easy to spot out outliers. But then when you look at the example, it actually points out errors in the data. So I was just wondering to what extent the whole process that you went through, if it allowed to kind of highlight investment needed in kind of cleaning up the data upfront or upstream?
It is very right what you say. When we start, when we prepare for these machine learning activities, it is exactly as you say, that lack of data and error in data become outliers. And so there is always quite a big work to make sure that data is, is right simply. And, and whenever we have a project, that is a big part of the project. We tend to call it washing data. Yeah.
Okay, next, I would like to ask our very own David Osimmo to ask his question.
Congratulations. It's really an excellent case to learn from here. I want to go back to the sentence you mentioned at the beginning, a different kind of leadership. And we know this, but what does it mean more quickly? Do you recruit differently? Do you manage people differently? Do you have different perform, way to assess performance from public administration? Did you have to make changes in these practices in order to basically make the position attractive for data scientists? Not just, not just recruiting them, but actually having them to stay?
Yes, there are many things in this leadership. If we take the data science as an example, it is so when you make a data science project, you must as a leader be open for that, open for failure. Because this trial and error is needed when you make data science. You go down one road and then it shows up, no, I can't show what I'd like to show. And then you have to give up that and start again. That is one point of view. But in general, these people are, these data science and software developers are people that everybody wants. So you need also not to manage them in detail, not to start to count all their hours and, and all that. They need to have this freedom and I only measure, we have agreed, you deliver this and that. And that is what I measure on. I don't measure what hours are you at work? Are you here or there and how do you do things? So I give people lots of freedom and they are very well educated. I have people that have a PhD in mathematics and physics. And it is, it is highly educated and, and expensive people. So you need this kind of freedom when, when you need these people. I don't know if that answers your question, David.
Thank you.
Okay, we're almost running towards the, the end of the seminar, but we still have room for a couple of questions. I would now like to give the floor to Gerard Decker from the Netherlands. So please tell us what institution you are from. And I know that your question will also help Alexandros Kyrontas in his wandering. So Gerard, please come ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Gerard Decker. I work for the Central Bureau of Statistics of the Netherlands. I'm just wondering, can you hear me well? Because the sign seems that, excellent.
Yes.
In during the introduction, it was mentioned that citizens are also involved in these processes. And also sometimes get to see their data. During the examples, you did not mention the role of citizens in the process. Do, do you sometimes share the outcome of a model with citizens to see if they change their behavior? Or is it only shared between institutions?
It is so that the, the outcome of the model or the, what the caseworker gets to know is, is that this person, it has been pointed out by the programs. And what, why has it been pointed out? It could be because, because you get two social benefits at the same time. Or it could be the way you live and so on. And then in Denmark, I don't know how it is in the rest of Europe, but you are not allowed to just appear on people's addresses and things like that. But you, you are obligated to write. And it's not the central data unit who does that. It is our customers who write to the citizens. And you are obligated to write before ten days and give all information to the citizen.
Excellent.
So I didn't talk so much about it because it's not part of our work. And there is a different set of law and regulation around that.
Super. Thank you for the answer.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Well, that brings us unfortunately rather quickly to the moment that we have to close our town hall again. Well, today's discussion, it has shown that achieving good data-driven results in government is not just a question of having ingenious machine learning techniques and a lot of good quality data, but also a question of connecting discussions on data quality and semantics, as Seth pointed out. And well, at the same time, also having great caseworkers there and the good interaction between the work of a data mining unit and the output of machine learning. And the human interpretation of it afterwards, which then also functions as the checks and balances really to protect citizens' rights. So at this point, I would like to express my gratitude to the speakers, all of you participants, and of course, my colleagues at the Lisbon Council making today's event possible. So please keep your eye out on our website for the video of today's virtual town hall meeting. We hope to see you very soon. Please stay safe, stay healthy and have a great weekend. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Bye bye.
Bye.
Bye.